We do the fire of the United States of America and to the public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got a couple things on the agenda before we get to the remarks of the public. There's something that's not on the agenda. The board wants to congratulate Chief Stewart. He just spent his last year as the president of the Connecticut Chiefs Association and under very difficult times for this year, did a wonderful job. They actually gave him a nice plaque when we were up there today. So we want to congratulate Chief Stewart on doing a very successful job as president of the Connecticut Chiefs.
Thank you. I don't know how successful I was, but...
Well, they never called the commission, so we're good.
Congratulations.
The second thing that we're here for, we have a citation for retired Lieutenant Bill Sidenhem. Bill Sidenhem, I've known for over 50 years and I served in the state police together. He was one of my first supervisors when I first became a state trooper. Since that time, since he's retired from the state police, he just spent, retired another second time for 28 years as the executive director of the Hundred Club of Connecticut. So we'd like to do something for him. Chief, do you make some comments?
Sure, absolutely. Well, first off, Representative Greg Howard, Detective Howard, come on up. Two hats tonight.
Neither one of those hats.
First about Bill, when my father was with the state police years ago and I came on at 19 years old as an auxiliary of the state police, he always talked about the good troopers, the good guys. He always talked about Lieutenant Sidenhem and, you, well, I mean, we won't talk about that, but Lieutenant Sidenhem and how he was involved in major crimes and was one of the good guys out there. He was a resident trooper in North Fallington for many years, had a big impact in this area of helping out over the years, and he's one of the good guys. But the big thing is with the Hundred Club afterwards, and if you don't know about the Hundred Club, they provide assistance to families of fallen officers and firefighters throughout the state. And over the years, unfortunately, he's had huge impacts after a tragedy in helping families and helping them through a variety of things. So Bill has done a great job. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Representative Howard that has a little citation for you. So Greg.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members, for allowing us to be with you, take time on your meeting for this special opportunity, a special occasion for Mr. Sidenhem. Senator Summers is very busy, as many of you know. We finished last night at midnight, so she sends her regards, we couldn't be here. And in fact, the entire General Assembly has been discussing police work a lot, as many know, in the last 12 months. And while we often do recognize the efforts of the heroes of the uniformer, uniform on every day like Lieutenant did for so many years, 25, I believe, a lot of times we don't recognize enough the families and what the lives, husbands, spouses, and family members have in their door, night after night, as a way to get that door open, to know that they're here with their home again. And worse yet, when instead they hear a knock and two people that they know are standing there hoping to happen. So those spouses and those families oftentimes feel very, a lot of emotion in that moment. But because of your work at the Hundred Club, you put a lot of the means, I believe there's a number like $12 million over the last 50 years, has been given to families of corrections officers, firefighters, and police officers who gave their lives in line of duty to help their families get through. Certainly a testament to a very long career and a very great commitment to the state of Connecticut, the people of this district, and those law enforcement families. So as you retire from that, and I, something tells me you probably won't completely disconnect from law enforcement after you've been in it for so long, but on behalf of the Senator, myself, and the General Assembly, we have this official citation for you that says, "Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to William Sidenhem, recognition for the many years he has served as an innovative leader and role model that inspired many others to follow your path as managing director of the Hundred Club of Connecticut. You set an example not only for your department, but for the entire state of Connecticut. Thank you for your many years of service and best wishes to you for a happy and healthy retirement. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses hope for continued success, given this 10th day of June 2021."
Thank you very much.
Thank you. One more chance.
So I've been at Hartford, I used to be the small guy. It's almost like a giant in these guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your service, and thank you guys again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. He gave me an extra year. I only did 27 with the Hundred Club.
Make sure they call you back. Mr. Chairman, appoint a person. Just a little bit, my name is Paul Turner, I'm here in Stone Temple, but just to reiterate what Greg Howard mentioned, I'm the valuable board member of the Hundred Club of the state of Connecticut for fallen officers. My father passed away in 1981 as a fire captain in New Haven at the line of duty, and the Hundred Club never missed an opportunity for my mother. Year after year after year. She passed this year at 94. Valentine's Day, Christmas birthdays, they took the place of my father. So Greg Howard, thank you so much.
Thank you.
A Hundred Club does wonderful, thanks.
I don't want to take up any of your meeting, I just want to share one thing with you. Just to give an idea about the Hundred Club, it's a very recent, very great club. When I first went to work there, I was a cop essentially. And I went to work, I was hired by a committee, and then all of a sudden I knew I had a board of directors, they had 30 people on the board of directors. And one of the first jobs I got was a firefighter's wife, about four years before his death, had put an addition on the side of the tuck. It was a garage, one car garage, and a room over the top, a man's cage. And I'll kind of shorten this up, but she noticed at some point that the addition was falling away from the house. Every time she'd drive, the driver should look, it was a little bit wider. She went to the town, they couldn't help her. She went to the builder, they plucked her off to the town, and she got the DMS. And she called me, and I went down with one of my directors, looking to go, and sure enough, this addition was sinking into the earth. And I did some work, I handled it almost like I'd handle a homicide investigation. I built a notebook of facts, photographs, certificates, and I went before my first board of directors meeting. Frankly, I was a little bit nervous, I was a little bit going into a house with an armed guy in there, but I'm standing before this group, and I stocked my presentation, and there was an old timer sitting on the end of the boardroom. And he said, "Hey!" And I jumped. And he said, "Are you telling us that this lady's house is falling down?" And my response was, "Well, I'm getting to that." He said, "It is, or it isn't. Is the house falling down?" I said, "Well, yeah, that's where I'm going." And he said, "Fix it." And I said, "Well, I've got more..." He said, "Fix it." So I got my dandruff a little bit, and I said, "Fix it. This could be an $85,000, fix it." And his response to me was, "Nobody asked you how much it was going to cost. We hired you to do the job. The house is falling down, fix it." And he made a motion, and everybody said, "Aye." And I got two weeks' worth of work with nobody, plus the fact that I never had any. And it was like that for the entire 27 years I was there. Whenever someone was in need, would lost a family, surviving family lost their life, we fixed that. And just before I left, we were providing $25,000 a year scholarship for the surviving kids, and they decided that wasn't enough, they raised it to $40,000. So this is a scholarship program on this one. I think I'm up here, I might just want to share that with you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is remarks of the public. If there's something on the agenda that you wanted to speak to, wait until the time comes up on the agenda. Or remarks of the public, if there's anything that is not on the agenda to be sent here presently that wants to talk about something that is not on our current agenda. Great, thank you. We'll move on to new business. Under new business, I'd like to have a motion to change our meeting date to September into some other commitments that I have, and I'd like to be here for that meeting, changing the date of the police commission meeting to September 9th to September 16th. Can I have a motion on that?
So, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move the meeting date. Now, next under all business, we've got an email on the park at Half Marathon. This is something that we've already, it's already come before the board, and the only thing they're asking for is a change of hours timeframe from 07:00 to 08:00, from 7 o'clock to 8 o'clock, for this year only. This marathon is the one, this could be the 10K, that's on November 14, 2021. The route is not changed, all they're asking for is a change in the time. Any discussion from any of the members? Chairman? Okay, do you have a motion?
The only thing is that they are eliminating the half marathon part of it, so they're just doing the 10K part of it. So it's just a shorter route, in case, I think they did that for Commissioner Tabor, which goes into the full marathon, he's going to do that, the 10K.
He's been trained for that.
Yeah.
I'm ready to go.
Okay.
I ran over, actually. Can I have a motion to approve the request of the marathon?
Second?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next thing on the agenda is the art festival, the Bay Street follow-up. This was discussed at our last meeting, a change in the art festival. And that change was going to be that there will be no booths on Route 1 at all, which will be a great safety savings issue and traffic issue. And there was a question of Bruce Lax, who's going to get together with the people that are on Bay Street, because there was some concerns on that, so first part of this is, Mr. Lax, would you like to address that issue, please?
Okay, do it right here.
Yeah, if you can come up if you want.
Thanks, you guys, for seeing me. And I'll give you a little bit of background since we met. So the, when the Mystic Art Festival was looking to come back again for 2021, we tried to do our new diligence. We called the legislative health district, we wanted to make sure that they were on board, we didn't want to start having an event or plan for an event that they felt might not happen. And they were very supportive about having it. We asked them about the safety and the protocol for COVID and what we should do, and they really weren't sure. You know, they were, he was, he said he thought that by August, things would be pretty good, but he wasn't sure, couldn't really predict the future. The committee got together and discussed it, and, you know, we saw this as an opportunity with COVID having taken a year off, to make some changes. We've heard some things in the wind about safety and about Route 1. So we came up with a plan to take all of the booths off of Route 1 and then have booths that would line the river from Cottrell down to Holmes, into Bay and into the Seaport, who we were partnering with for the first time. We, the next step we did was we went to the police and fire on both sides of the bridge, had to be presented to them, and meant to make sure that they were on board, which they were, they were very supportive of it. Our next step was to go to the neighbors. So a contingent of myself, working from my office, Bill Ferguson, who's on the committee, went door-to-door a few months before the May 13 meeting, and met with all the neighbors. And there was some mixed reviews. We got some who had said, you know, "Absolutely not on my street, I don't want it," and some were like, "Okay, we'll see." We, our intent at first was to line everywhere with booths. And after we met with the neighbors, we realized that that wasn't going to fly, that they didn't want that much competing on their, in their neighborhood. So we, after we were at the police commission in May, that same day, there was a letter from the neighbors with five demands on it, that we saw at the meeting. And so we took that letter, we had a discussion about it in the committee, and we, and we had a response to it. Basically, the five demands were absolutely nothing on Bay Street, two uniformed police officers who would, you know, be on the street the whole, the whole time, trash barrels, just fine, no food vendors, which were fine with. And then arranging for cars, like how would cars, how would the street be closed, how would that not work? So I gave Dave a call, and he called up another neighbor who lives at Five, Bay Street, and we met, and we told him where our plan was. Our plan was that we were okay with everything except no booths on the street and police coverage. From the police coverage standpoint, I'm not a professional, I was looking for the chief and the police commission to tell me what we needed on that street. If the police commission told me we needed two uniformed officers, that's what we would do. As far as no booths on the street, we feel very strongly that in order for the art festival to have continuity, that there needs to be points to touch on the street.
It's a little bit difficult to do the flow of the show, you know, people come down to Cottrell Street, cross over one, onto Home Street, and then they get to that three-way intersection at the end of Holmes where Bay and, yep, Bay at Holmes, yep. It'd be difficult to continue the flow of the show into the Seaport without any evidence that the show continues on. So we wanted to kind of try and be in the middle there.
Yeah, so we came up with a proposal that was, we would break the street into quarters, and these would remain in the quarters, the four places. We would put in the first quadrant closest to Home Street, two 10-by-10 information booths together, with the open on all sides, and with several people in there to service people. In the next quadrant, this would be, we're not sure exactly what the sizes would be, that was one of the difficulties for us, is we don't have everything in yet as far as what's coming, but we do know we have an art installation that's being done. The art installation, our chairs that are being painted by middle school children, and they have words on them about discussion, like, you know, race words and things that are heavy topics for today.
Talking points about current events that are going on that would foster conversation among people visiting the art installation.
So it's, it's an exhibit, really, but the chairs face each other, and people, if they wanted to, could sit down and have a conversation, hopefully peacefully. The third quadrant would be a BMW. Antonino is going to be a sponsor, and they put a 10-by-10 tent next to it. So this is a, this is a 10-by-20. These are all to scale, so this is 10-by-10 into the 10-by-20. That's two 10-by-10s, 10-by-20 into 10-by-10. And then the last two on the last quadrant would be two nonprofits and two 10-by-10 booths. We went to the neighbors, we met with them all, we appreciated very much that they were there, and that they all showed up, and that somebody offered their house. And it didn't go well. The neighbors, I don't think all the neighbors, but there was a very loud voice about there being nothing on the street, that it was either nothing or nothing, as far as they were concerned. And, you know, from my standpoint, I took what the police commission said, which was to go back to the neighbors and try to work it out. We were looking at 20 booths and came down to what you're seeing here, and felt that we made, you know, we moved on what we were, what we were looking for. And, you know, the neighbors have been, the neighbors have been very vocal about there being nothing. And so I wish I could come back to you tonight and tell you that we came to an agreement with the neighbors, but we did not. And, you know, I think that it was a, it was a difficult evening, Monday night, and, you know, I think that the chamber, really, I'm new at the chamber, and for me, it's really all about community and business and making sure that we're good neighbors, and that's what we tried to do. You know, we didn't try to squeeze it in anywhere, we tried to work with the neighbors, and this is their second opportunity to be able to be here and talk to you. And so I was, the process was a little disappointing to me, but builds character, and we'll, we'll move on, and hopefully we can figure out how to work this out.
I think, I'm trying to hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry. I think that, you know, this is my fourth or fifth year involved in the show, and it's a balancing act, right? We need to make the show attractive to artists that want to attend, or else they're not going to apply for participating. We need to make the show attractive to pedestrians, to the people that want to come and see the show, because if no one wants to come to town to see the show, to experience this event, then the artists aren't going to come. We need to have a show of a certain size and caliber, we need the booths there. We've toyed around for many, many years, we've heard a certain fear about changing the route of the show, and every year it's been an obstacle to that for a variety of reasons. It's thanks to the generosity of the Seaport Museum for opening up their campus to us, that's the only reason we can show, we can change the show this year. It's the only way that we can fit all 200-plus artists that will be participating this year is because of the kindness and the generosity of the Seaport. That's never happened before, so I think this is a very opportunity for us, and from my experience running the show for the last few years, and the feedback I've heard from patrons, from artists, from people in the community, having to do some Route 1 is wildly dangerous, is a challenge. It creates traffic flow issues for our residents and community members alike. It is, and, you know, we're downtown throughout this event, you know how challenging it is when people walk out in the streets on the Route 1 when there are booths there. I think this is one of the only safe buy-wholes that can kind of check all the boxes. It takes the traffic off Route 1, it is a natural flow for the show, it gives us enough space for all the booths we need for our artists, and I think it gives a beautiful smell out for the people that are going to kind of frequent the show. But the only way you can really achieve that is to have a cohesive, cohesive event that all of the ties together. And I think that the points that the neighbors brought up, those five points were really thoughtful and absolutely something that we are 100% willing to work on. You know, we absolutely agree, no food and beverage on there, on that street, that's absolutely fine to provide by that point. The idea of attractiveness being strategically placed and making, absolutely that throughout the show. In terms of uniforms officers, I mean, this is a very family-friendly event, it is a pretty quiet, mellow event, people don't get too wild at it, but we would defer to you as the safety experts on where the most strategic placement would be. But I think that this is a very viable, meet-in-the-middle, low-density way of continuing the show into the Seaport.
Just a couple of points. By doing it this way and having the Seaport involved, they now have a parking lot with 500-plus parking spaces there. And people will be able to park there and have a natural progression, walk into town and keep that traffic, keep those cars out of, out of the center of town, they're trying to park on the other side of, by Cottrell, you know, and areas. So we also realize that there are places on Route 1 that need, that rely on the art show. There's the churches, and they have, they have food installations that they use that are a big fundraiser for them. And we plan on working with them and accommodating them the best we can, so we'll give them space on the street and make sure that they have an area to make sure that they don't suffer from, you know, us changing the route. We don't want that.
Thank you. I'll make one comment, then I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions for you. First comment is, by statute, the law enforcement responsibility for any type of exhibits of this type fall by statute with the police chief of the community. So the requirements for law enforcement fall directly on Chief Stewart, so he'll make that determination, how much law enforcement we need in what areas. But first off, I'll go to Commissioner.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of questions.
Sure.
And I think we touched on this last meeting, just to kind of get some confirmation for this, over and above what you've talked about. Will the chamber ensure that adequate and safe access and egress be provided to the Bay Street residents during all hours of operation?
Absolutely.
When, how are they going to do that?
Yep, if you recall, Doc, we have a similar issue with residents on Home Street in the apartment units. The police force works with us to provide escorts in and out during, out the show, so whenever a resident needs to enter the apartment or leave the apartment, we work with their team to escort the vehicles in and out.
Okay. Second, you've already addressed the Seaport parking, which I don't think the last time we knew was like 500 spaces, right?
Yeah.
And this one kind of directed to the chief, if I may, and you touched on it already also, the rerouting from historic to this route is an improvement for pedestrian and the vehicle's safety, in your estimation?
Absolutely. We've talked about that, actually, the chief from Groton, I believe, petitioned DOT a number of years ago to see if we could shut Route 1 off for the time period for the art festival, and said absolutely not. We also had one very bad accident that was actually on the Groton side involving the executive director of the chamber who got hit by a truck while in the street. And every year, we worry about that, especially on Route 1, because of the volume of traffic. So getting it off of Route 1 is a godsend.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Elmer.
I may be overthinking this, has any contingency been made to make sure that pedestrians don't go out on those docks?
So we have, we have made a commitment to have volunteers who are sure that, and who will be patrolling that area to make sure that if people try to, that they would be stopped, so we won't have people out there, volunteers out there for the two days.
And of course, accurate signage as well.
Yeah.
I beg your pardon?
Accurate signage as well throughout the street, protecting private property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Turner, thanks for presenting. I just want to be assured that as we look at Bay Street, I mean, those are luxury properties, I'm just thinking of my real estate side company that's employed here, and that I want to be assured of that, whatever is being marketed along Bay Street in particular is art festival-like, and by that I mean that it's more a street of a transition to get people to the Seaport who has been gracious enough to open up their venue and have bands and more art festival-like activities. So I think, I think there's a blending here to make sure that this is kind of a trial to say, "I'm supportive of the project," but I also know that there's serious concerns from those property owners, that things don't go awry, and, you know, I'm thinking about things like, you know, just, you know, parking along Gravel Street in Groton currently, and what's currently taking place in town, that there's a large sensitivity along Bay Street that their properties won't be abused. And I think that that's important, that the chamber recognizes and that you factor into your plan. You know, it's kind of, it's difficult for us as a police mission to say we're going to stanchion police officers at the beginning and then to Bay Street as if we're having a, you know, a large situation, we're having a rally of some type. But I think it has to be, it has to be important for the community to know that things have changed, that we've taken a major safety component off of the main drag on Main Street and brought that down the street and into Bay Street, and I employ the Seaport for opening it up and really making a bang-out festival. But I think it's incumbent on the chamber and the festival to know that there's a major concern along Bay Street, to make sure that those people are whole, and I think that we don't want to lose sight of that in the festival. And that means that law enforcement and our team here is cognizant that we have, we want to make sure that this goes right, all right? That it isn't just, we give the green light for Bay Street and then all of a sudden we just kind of, you know, look the other way, because I think that, you know, there's no, there's no kettle corn along Bay Street, there's no cotton candy along Bay Street, there's no fair field, Ferris wheel along Bay Street, there's no, it's more, this year as we come out of the box with Bay Street in particular, that it's more a transition point that we get people to the Seaport. And that's, and that's where I am in my head if I said yes to Bay Street and move it into the Seaport.
I think our big fear, if I can chime in, is that if we put nothing on Bay Street, that people will get to the end of Home Street and be like...
And say it's over.
Yeah, it's over, I'm headed back, there's no reason for me to continue, even with signage, even with volunteers directing people down. I need that natural flow, and my fear is if people don't continue long past that, that the artists that are placed in the Seaport will have a severe disservice and won't be interested in coming back again, that that would really be detrimental to the overall experience of the show. So I think that, like, your point about being transitional, that's why we hope by dividing this into quadrants, by being very selective and very limiting in who we place here, that that creates that nice transitional flow into the Seaport entrance, where the show kind of picks up into this form of a bus again.
Yeah, and knowing, Amanda, knowing sensitivities along Bay Street, to make sure that we really, Bruce, have, have volunteers along that route that knows that that's, that's a hotspot that would either sink this going forward or make it very successful to say, gee, we have valid concerns, but really, things were taken care of, and we, and things ran really smoothly. And I think that that's where we want to be as a police commissioner.
I appreciate that, and I think that, you know, we have a respect for the neighbors, we have a respect for the commission, and we want to work with everybody, and I think we were thoughtful, I think, about what we were choosing to put there between the, you know, BMW and that art installation that people can talk about, but it keeps people moving, and there's just points that keep moving down. And we, you know, if I lived on that street, I'd want precautions taken that make sure that you don't go on my dock, and...
And I think that, you know, we have a respect for the neighbors. We have a respect for the commission and we want to work with everybody. And I think we were thoughtful, I think, about what we were choosing to put there between the BMW and that art installation that people can talk about. But it keeps people moving and there's just points that keep moving down. And we, you know, if I lived on that street, I'd want precautions taken that make sure that you don't go on my lawn or go on my dock. And, and I think we're doing that, we're trying to take care of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Biggs.
Yeah, I would just follow up on Krishna Turner's comments to say that everything that I have seen, and I think what we would hope is that all residents of Mystic, regardless of the type of property they're in, enjoy the respect and certainly the fair treatment of the commission and the police. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear about that. Whether you're a renter or living in a luxury property is not the issue. The issue is respect for residents. And I think we've all seen that you have gone out of your way to show respect and to be flexible. This is an important event, and I think it is important for the record just to remember that while the pandemic is largely over, the economic impacts of the pandemic will be with us for some time. It's incumbent, I would suggest, on all of us as members of a community to do everything we can to support our businesses, to support the types of artists and artisans who come to this event and make their livelihood there, and to support our mystic businesses that rely on this event as well. So, you know, I'm in favor of it and I appreciate you having taken the efforts that you have to have discussions with these residents and I'm sure with other residents in Mystic as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Before we turn it over to the other comments, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
No, I just, again, appreciate it, everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I understand we have some comments from residents of Bay Street who would like to speak. Who would like to speak? Identify yourself and tell me your answer.
Dave Ryan from eight Bay Street, where I live with my wife Lisa and my daughter Isabel. Just want to first of all acknowledge and compliment the effort of the chamber to reach out to the residents on multiple occasions, been very accommodating. We did beat them up thoroughly, so what you're saying is correct. We're basically adamantly opposed. I think you need to revisit the Seaport numbers because about a third of that parking lot is covered with all kinds of wood and stuff like that. So there's probably more like 350, not more than 400. I walk my dog there every night, so I kind of know.
I think they're going to try to move the wood. I think they've talked about it too.
And also, I think one of the things that's beginning to overwhelm me, and Rod can go into the detail, if you're talking on your website, is 80,000 people. So you're telling me 80,000 people are going down Bay Street? 80,000 people are going down Bay Street to go home? And you're saying you're going to have tents there? Some of these chairs don't want that there to stop people from that natural flow to the Seaport. So just again, in all compliments to those folks, they took the meeting.
Thank you. Thanks. Come on up and tell us your name and your address, where you live.
My name is Bob Maris. I live at two Bay Street, one of the residents on Bay Street in Mystic. And I agreed with my neighbor, you know, we beat these guys up too good the other day. I think we were pretty adamant from the day that they came into our neighborhood and asked for the event. We were pretty adamant and shocked, to tell you the truth, that it wasn't even coming on Bay Street at all. Because I didn't read anything about this in the paper at all. And I think there's been a lot of public exposure of how the event has changed. And it was adamant amongst all of us. I think that, I don't think anybody said this is a great idea. And we were all very concerned about tents. And we said at that first meeting, which was a door to door meeting, at least I did and all the neighbors I talked to, we all said we didn't want tents. None, no tables, no information booths, nothing to stop or hesitate that enormous flow of traffic going between those two points of Bay Street. I think what, you know, things changed after they left after that meeting also. Because there's a lot of questions that were answered. There were some, you know, how are you going to provide, you know, you put the horses out? I've done a number of these events with you guys, as you know, and I know how they work and block off roads. And then sometimes there's an attendant there to allow people that need to get access because they live there. And sometimes there isn't. You get out your car, you move it, whatever. It's an inconvenience, but a minor inconvenience. But let's not kid ourselves that this is going to be an easy situation to contain. I want, you know, it was presented to us, it was presented the same way. Well, there's only four tents. First, we said no tents. But then they couldn't say no tents, so they said, okay, we're going to do four tents. We asked them one the second time. We said, yeah, okay, you said four, we would like none. But that wasn't enough. They come back and they're still asking for four tents. But I think the main thing that changed for us after we sent that letter saying that we didn't want tents there and that we needed some kind of indication of how this event was going to take place, how are you going to handle the traffic for the people that do live there and want to have access to and from their property over that weekend, you know? How are you going to handle that in a little more detail than what was being presented? And, you know, you were saying, well, there's only going to be four booths. And okay, it's a kids thing with chairs, a public discourse thing where people can talk. That sounds all kind of not intrusive and not too bad, you know? An information booth that, again, doesn't sound like, you know, it's not a cotton candy stand or a hot dog stand or, or anything like that. And a couple of nonprofit things. But anything on that street, and everybody was adamant, we didn't want any booths, any tables, any impediment of that traffic. We didn't really understand the size and scope of where this, this event has gone to. Now, I've been in this town for three years and I brought many festivals to you and different things that worked with you. And I know crowd control and I know how it works. And I want to congratulate these two guys because they do a damn good job. I mean, you look at Mystic Eat, you look at the Taste of the Ten Hundred Kids before that. You look at the Art Festival that has gone on for those years, the Shop Fest, the Irish Festival, some of those I brought to this town. They do a damn good job in all of that, okay? No complaints on the police department. Our finest are the finest. They do their job. What arises to my mind is when I looked on the website and I saw that 80, 85,000 people are going to expect to attend this. It's advertised as an event that's two miles long of exhibitions. I figured that must be a mile from the Seaport Museum to the Seaport Marina. And you're a mile up and a mile back. And then it says, and we expect, you know, an attendance of 80,000 people over two day period of time. Now, has anybody really talked about the 80,000 people? We talked about, okay, a couple of innocent tables for kids, an information booth. But did we talk about 80,000 people? Now, this art event never had that situation where you had to move 80,000 people one mile to engage this event. I want to just give you some numbers here. You know, I say 80,000 people. I want you to really understand 80,000 people. Yankee Stadium capacity, 55,000 people. Gillette Stadium for football game, 65,000 people. How many officers are required if you're guarding, if you see they're directing traffic, handling crowd situation? It's not two officers, okay? So we could say, well, in the past, we've handled the art festival, okay? We've done a good job and I'm busy route one. Okay, now it's not on route one. That's great. It's great for the business community down there because now their shops might get some business because they didn't get business before and they weren't very supportive of the art festival in the past. I was hot, I headed that organization. And I remember many times asking that organization, why do you have it in, in August? We already are overburdened with people every weekend. We have plenty of business in the business community in the summer. Why not put it in the fall or in, in early spring? When we don't already have the situation. You take away a busy weekend downtown on route one of the summer for business community, when you have all those tents there because a lot of people won't come downtown and they don't really go into shops that much. Take it off route one, great, kudos, you guys, that's a good thing, get it off it. It didn't really belong on there, okay? But what have you done instead? I'll say, you might have had a mile long before. If you went all the way from the Seaport down Padrel Street, up Home Street, down West Main Street, over DeWalter Street and down there, you probably had a mile. But you had two police departments monitored in that. Now you have one, okay? The art festival, I love the art festival. I've been here for 33 years. I lived downtown, I have my businesses downtown. I'm, I am downtown, okay? I love it. But every year it has grown bigger and bigger and bigger. Now, I had this discussions with chief and captain here about the size of events. We tried to propose new events and it's always been said to me, geez, we can't do any more events. There are already too much, it's too big, it's too much for us, we just can't handle it. But this, this event here, we're bringing in 80,000 people and we've got to monitor a mile of 80,000 people traversing. That's 80,000 people in, that's 80,000 people back. That's 160,000 people over a 15 hour period of time. Now, if you start to do the math on that, take out your calculator. And it turns out to be an enormous amount of people per hour and per minute going in front of a property. If you divide that 80,000 by 15 hours, they're operating eight hours one day, seven hours another day. That's 15 hours. But the reality of it is that, and if you divide that numbers by 15, you'll see the number of people going by our street every minute is outrageous. But this is even looking a little bit more closely. They don't all come equally over that eight hour period. There's very few people participating at nine, 10, 11 in the mornings. They all come at 11 and 12, they stay at three or four. So now you shrink down that 15 hours to seven or eight hours of actual intensity. Those, that number of people across that street is much, much larger. 80,000 people. That's, how many people are in our town, okay? So, okay, we've had this situation before, but it's more condensed. And it was two police departments. So my question is to this, to this police department, which I highly respect and I know their capabilities, can you really assure us that you can handle double the load, twice the distance with one police department? I have my doubts, okay? Now, I, just like everybody here, we all love the chamber, they do great things. They did come to us, they brought this to us, they were very diligent about that. But have they really thought this out of taking and putting 50% here and 50% here and connecting the two? How is it, how's it going to be done? Well, if I look at a shot like this or something like that, I can easily see, wow, it's very, there we just come along Bay Street, out the river, beautiful and everything, okay? But that's not really taken into consideration what this 80,000 people are. That's the issue, not the child's event or the information booth, the low profile pony act that's parked there. That's not the issue. The issue is 80,000 people that have been pushed into a residential component of our town. Before, it was in a commercial district. I go to these art festivals in other towns too. I was in Stewart, Florida visiting a friend. I saw some of the same artists that were in Mystic and I said, hey, you were in Mystic in the summer? Yes, we do. Right, they go all over the country. And I said to him, it's really interesting. You go out there in the summer? He said, yeah, we go up to the New England states in the summer because of the weather. And we go to the mid Atlantic states in the fall. And we go back down to the southern states in California in the winter because of the weather. So from their perspective, that summer date makes a lot of sense. Does it really make sense for our perspective in this town when we're already burdened with enormous growth in this town and traffic situations? Does it make sense to expand an event like this and then push that expansion? So it has to affect residential neighborhoods with all that traffic. Now, I want to ask you guys, I know some of you, I know you, know you well, Bob. Would you feel comfortable going back home tonight and talking to your neighbors? And you go over and you say, hey, neighbor, I just voted to bring 80,000 people down this street next week and for two days.
We don't know if that's going to happen yet, but listening to your presentation.
Okay.
And then after your presentation, we have some other people want to speak.
Okay, so I'll try to wrap this up. If I'm talking too long, I'm sorry. But this is what I want to convey.
No, I don't want to cut you off. Take all the time you need.
Okay, I want you to think about that as individuals. Bob, you live a long point. Would you go home and tell the neighbors, a pastor that brought 80,000 people onto our street? If your answer is no or hesitant, then what right do you have to impose that on my street? Okay, you don't live there. You might say, well, that's why I don't live downtown. Well, I live in close proximity downtown, but I don't live downtown. I live in an area that's protected by zoning that says, commercial enterprise is here, here's a line, nothing goes on here. So I expect that same protection that I get from zoning from the police commission. The event's not too big. Over the last five, 10 years, bigger and bigger. When I first came to town, it was a nice little event. There was artisans, then it became artisans and craft people. And it doubled in size, great. Craft people are artists. Then it became, okay, now we need concessions, we need water stations, hot dogs, caramel popcorn. It got bigger and bigger and bigger to almost like a carnival atmosphere. Can we afford in this town, and you guys tell me, because you guys are the guys that have to handle the heat on this? Can we handle, keep expanding these events over and over again? To what, to the point that something does happen and then we reflect? And, you know, we're living today. And I talked to Todd earlier today about the world. There's no guarantees, this is a different world we're in today, okay? This is a peaceful event, it's an art event. There's mostly old people going to be walking up and down, looking at the art, some kids. This is a peaceful event. Look at our news. There's been a lot of peaceful events, schools, parks, parties, mass shootings, crazy craziness. We're dealing with a whole different world of concerns today. Yet we're going to continually bring in more and more people until something does go wrong, Bob, and then? And then we look back and say, well, maybe we shouldn't have let it get that big. Maybe we should have thought about it a little bit better. Maybe the chamber, and I, you know, I like the chamber, I like the art festival, I love the Seaport. I think it's a good idea, but I don't think enough homework was done on this. I don't think enough research was done into how are we really going to handle this number, okay? So you say, well, maybe 80,000 more than 10. Maybe it's only 40,000. Do the math on that, still unacceptable. It's beyond comprehension of what you're doing when you're taking that number of people and putting them down a 17 wide street with eight houses on, on the river. Now, I live there, I have a problem every weekend, as all other residents on our street do, with people trespassing on our property, going on our docks, taking photo shoots, doing this, sitting on the rail fences. The posts on those fences are from 1902, okay? They're fragile. They can't handle people sitting on them and leaning on them. They're aesthetic, they're historical. You're going to bring 80,000 people there and then put some volunteers to say, hey, stay off that. You guys don't want to do that. Police officers don't want to be in the position of walking down the street because you're going to have to say it 100 times, 100 times an hour. You're going to be asking somebody to get off the fence. It's a natural thing to do. You walk down that street, it's beautiful, you want to take a pause, you sit, hey, take a picture with me, do a selfie, let me sit on the fence. That's how it happens. Okay, so I just think that when they separated the two components, not enough thought was given in this. Oh, it all sounds really good on the surface. But now you've got to think of the logistics of this, moving 80,000 people on a one mile stretch from one scent to the other. And how are you going to handle that? And I haven't heard anything from them or from anybody on how that's going to be done. All I've heard is some insurance says, oh, we've done this a long time, it's, it's easy, don't worry about it. I do worry about it because this is a different event. And this event has never been pushed to have to put 80,000 people or all their attendees down a residential street. That has never been the case. The zoning doesn't allow that type of enterprise on our street. All I can do is beg this police commission not to vote on this tonight. To give it some more thought, to have the chamber come back with a better plan, where they work in coordination with you guys on specifically how you're going to address these issues they're not bringing up. What I'm saying now is the sentiment of the rest of the neighborhood. We kind of quickly had to put this all together since the meeting on Monday night and a couple of people have left. But I have this letter, I'd like to give it signed by all of us. And all I'm asking to you is to please not vote on this tonight, to give it the proper consideration. Go home and really think about this. This is not a situation that should be hastily, you know, hastily just saying, okay, we're going to do it because we've done it in the past. They haven't done this in the past. This is all new. And they have no, no other event that they can say that they've done this type of thing. You have road races that go through communities and things like that, and they shut down the roads and this, or they monitor it. That's a different thing. That's a couple of hours in, a couple of hours and everybody leaves. This is a very, very huge undertaking and a very, very large expansion of this into our residential community, residential community. It's where I live in the summer, okay? On a busy weekend. I got 10 weeks of the summer to enjoy, to enjoy my weekends, to enjoy. And on one of those weekends, all of a sudden I'm going to have 80,000 people walking in front of my house? You've taken that weekend away from me. And you can control all those kids and all those people? You can't, you can't. I know that because that street is crowded with pedestrians every weekend and almost every other day in the summer too, when the weather is nice. And kids run up on our lawns, kids run down on our docks, they sit on our fence. Okay, it's all kind of cool, we handle it. But 80,000 people is a whole different situation. And I need some guarantees from these two gentlemen and from the community of ours and from the chamber that their volunteers are going to be able to handle that. I haven't seen enough information on it. I think, you know, there's other alternatives. You want to involve the Seaport, have it at the Seaport, put it in their parking lot. They have plenty of space, it's all condensed. Would that not be an easier situation to police as a police department? Everything's right here instead of a mile stretch that you're going to have to patrol? These are the considerations I ask you to take from a personal point of view and ask yourselves, would you want this on your street? And if the answer is, uh, I'm sure, then please don't impose it on us. A little more thought, a little more planning and a little bit more assurances on just how A little more thought, a little more planning, and a little bit more assurances on just how you're gonna protect us.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your, uh, your turn. Is there anyone else here from the public that would like to speak? Please come up and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Matthew Bedoin, I, as of six weeks ago, live at eighteen Johnson Street in Waukesha, put on business owner at twenty-five Cottrell Street, might know who, Mystic Network. And I want to, I want to speak, first of all, I want to call my grandmother Irene Johnson. She passed away in November from COVID. And when I heard the Mystic Art Show was gonna start up again, I wanted to be on their committee because after seeing what she what she went through, I wanted to make sure it was safe. The term expanded has been used here quite a few times, and there's two kinds of expansion. There's expansion from the point of view of how many people are gonna be here? And eighty thousand, that's a fair number, it's typical. There's usually eighty thousand people crossing Route One back and forth, ducking traffic, the cop stops up here, the guys dive across between booths, you're blind, and I'm hoping for the best. Unfortunately, Trish Walsh wasn't the best. I've all, you know, so when I saw it laid out, I thought it was interesting to see the majority were, and even under the booths in the Seaport. I consider Rockford a landfill, I still, and putting this booth, putting those things, because I saw this, oh, Bruce is setting it up, about what, a hundred yards apart? Is it just enough room to sightline them to keep you moving? And but since there's no mercantile there, there's no reason to hang out there unless you have a chair to sit in the chat, which may also take away from the fence sitting thing, which it sounds like he's already dealing with thousands of kids a day already doing that deed. So I I would hope that the police and the Chamber can keep it down to the same level of hooliness that's he's already experiencing every week for ten weeks a year or better. But it was all, from my point of view, the design was set up from a point of view of medical safety. But on top of that, now we have the layers of of safety of, you know, you can cordon off the area, you can cordon off the two sides if you needed to. You've got better access to parking, so you've got signaled crosswalk, which you wouldn't have if we did, as they suggested, move it into the Seaport parking lot. Now you've got, the cars are all gonna be locked out downtown. Now, growing up in town, I spent thirty odd years of my life never going to the art show because the rule was, it's dangerous, you don't go there. Because things happen, you just don't know, from traffic control points of view, the density, well, we used to be in Wicket Quack, you go up the drop, go to the top of the hill, you know you're not getting through downtown, it's gonna be a two-hour drive. So you go up the highway, you go around, and you come back down, there's the grandma's in the line. And I think it's gonna be excellent to finally see Route One not be complained about in the Sunnington forums for seventeen hundred posts, to not see brigades of the rest of the taxpayers in town freaking out that they don't have access to their own street anymore. And I, it sucks that a few people are gonna see a hundred and sixty thousand feet step through their, step on their street with only, you know, a couple dozen volunteers to help cordon them for two days, for two days. And I feel for that, I really, I'm sorry for that, but I want to see this a safe event, both in terms of debris coming on the river and keeping whatever virus might still be remaining in August, you know, dispersed and spread out and not affected, and also the perceived safety that creates from the medical point of view. The booths themselves, the plan is to space them out for, again, for health and safety concerns back when it was first designed. And I think it's gonna be easier to control for segmentation, I think the booth spacing's gonna help out. And I think having eighty thousand visitors divided by fifteen hours, not multiplying by fifteen hours, they're not, you know, we're not having two-point-five million people coming here. Not ducking through booths and crossing Route One is gonna be much more safe and much more true to traffic flow and pedestrian control be a lot easier that way. And I really hope you'll look at the safety and respect the wishes of Bay Street as best we can and just make the right decision.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments. Chief, would you like to make some comments here?
Of course. See, I've been here thirty-eight years, I think I've been to the art festival either working it or walking around thirty-seven or at least thirty-six of those years. So I've seen everything that has gone on there as far as crime or lack of crime, about pedestrians, about working it, the hours, the flow, everything that's gone on there. When I became chief, one of our big discussions was how can we make this safer? Now, the art festival, you talked about it growing, a lot of that growth isn't the art festival itself. It's private property that have expanded and decided to piggyback upon the backs of the art festival because it is the art festival weekend. Most of the events, even when you run the Pirate, the show down there, somebody comes along and says, there's gonna be people there, I'm making money, and they do it. And some of the nonprofits do it, some of the other places, they set up in church parking lots that don't, that are not part of the art festival, but they take advantage of that stuff. So you talk about eighty thousand people, I'm not sure, it all depends on the weather. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not. We get, we deal with it, it's not eighty thousand at once, so it's not a herd of people coming down. It's usually, if you if you did the quick math, it's about fifty-five hundred at any given time if you broke it out into the hours. That is less than half of what we have for Taste of Mystic or Mystic Eats Downtown. Because usually when I look, I can see how many heads are on that street and how many people are there. I think they presented some things here that we still have to work through on a on a couple of things. And you're gonna probably find your neighborhood more accessible than what you have in the past because right now, it's a free-for-all for parking down there, just park wherever the hell they want down there, and you're sort of stuck with it. Whereas if this is going through, Bay Street becomes no parking on Friday. So then none of the artists all of a sudden just set something up there or leave their camper van in front of your house for the weekend or do something like that on the side streets. What would happen is I'd make a suggestion to the Chamber that they have one or two phone numbers that are are given out to all the residents down there, that if you're either coming or going, they can call, they can get contacted to their, one of the volunteers down there, and they'll have a police officer escort you in and out. We we've done that very, very successfully at the condos on Home Street, and we haven't had a complaint about that since we've set it up. And we get them in and out of there very successfully. So you're gonna be able to come and go pretty much as you can go. Rod, you talk about human nature. There is no guarantee about anything in the world. No guarantee that somebody's not on your front lawn right now or not gonna be at midnight tonight, we all know that. But we deal with it, and I think probably by having a police officer right at the Bay Street and and Home Street with a police car with flashing lights on it probably going, that you're probably not gonna have too many issues with routiness, anything along that line. And, you know, we're trying to keep cars and other people from going down there, but we want you to have access to your properties in and out, and you'll be able to do that. We're probably gonna have to block off the two streets, Isham and the other one is? What is it? Oak, sorry. And just make it all no parking down there, you're in and out. This is, this is like a home run for you guys from an easy in and out, I hope. But again, there's no guarantee, it's a, it's a, it's a trial, would be my suggestion, that it, you you try it one year, see how it goes. Is this working, not working, is it a real pain in the neck? Was there an issue down there? Again, we're dealing with human nature. We can't guarantee anything or everything that's on there. We can only plan to try and do the best that we can to make it as safe as possible. Knock on wood, we've been able to do that for seventy-five years. And unfortunately, unfortunately, I've been down there for over half of them, and I have lost not enough weight sweating down there in the hot sun on Route One and that flagpole and walking up and down those streets. So if we can make it safer in some way and add to your business, you own businesses. This is a home run for your business.
No, at least make a correction there, there's not a home run for businesses downtown. We already have that business downtown, we already have. And when the art festival came, it was on Route One, it was a detrimental business. Our business association talked about it extensively and asked the Chamber to change it, basically, and it did. But that's, that's not relevant.
Okay, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what you're referring to.
There's a lot of misinformation that it's great for business, it's great for all the residents. I'm not sure that's the case. And if you're saying there's eighty thousand people down there anyway on that weekend, you're bringing in more. So, I, I, I understand what you're saying, sir, I, I really do. But I don't think it belongs on Bay Street. And I don't think allowing an event to expand to the point where it's required to infiltrate residential neighborhoods to survive is a good thing to endorse. I think the better thing to do is say, okay, we want to involve Seaport, we want to have a better organization. Do your homework so that you don't impose on residents and residents.
I think, Rod, I think the Chamber, from what we gathered by their presentations, that they have done well. But this isn't just willy-nilly, this is an idea, they have, they've come forward with ideas about how to make this. They've met with you in the neighborhood, and I give them credit for doing that because a lot of places don't do that. And they, and they, they go out and they talk to people and they say, how can we make this work? How can we do it? This is a home run for us, for the police department to get it off of Route One.
Yes, I understand.
It is a home run.
I understand that component. It's a total, not a home run for us on Bay, now we're already eight residents, I understand that, and you're talking about the safety of the whole community, I understand that, and you're absolutely crap.
Right.
However, can you give me that assurance that?
I've never given you an assurance about anything. You want, you want assurances? Uh-uh. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not progressive insurance.
That's probably, you know, we can't get an assurance, but we want to feel comfortable.
You'll feel comfortable because when you look out your window, you're gonna see a police car sitting right there.
All right, I think we, we understand completely the opinions of the residents and of the Chamber. Do any of the commissioners, any of the commissioners have any additional questions? Bruce, do you want to say something?
Is it okay to just?
I don't want to go and give a bet, we understand what the point is. Okay, that's fine. I mean, I think that, I think that it's not a question and answer period, you present your point, we take that into consideration, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna take everybody's into consideration. And so I'm gonna propose a motion to accept the proposal of the Mystic Chamber to utilize Bay Street for the art festival on August fourteen fifty, set forth tonight by the Chamber. And that law enforcement requirements for the festival should be returned by Chief Stewart, as set forth in the general statutes. And that in future years, that any addition in future years, they have to come back to the the Chamber to review how this particular event went this year. Does the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second?
Sorry.
Any discussion on the motion by the commissioners?
I, I just want one comment. Because I respect Rod and Cheryl a lot, and I have spoken to some, I have personally spoken to some of the other residents on Bay Street, so I'm very cognizant of your comments relative of, as to the introduction to this new activity on Bay Street. And I have thought long and hard about it. I, I think my, my evaluation of it is, I think it would be good to at least consider it this year, a, this first year. I think it can be managed well. If that doesn't happen, then we could certainly, it would be certainly revisited the next year. And I guess maybe, Bruce, you could, you could respond to this. I'm not sure that over the last few years that the art festival itself has been expanding. As a matter of fact, my impression is that it's partially been declining as far as the number of artists that have been attending. So I, from that perspective, I would certainly encourage some effort or make an effort as far as the overall town's concerned to maintain the art festival. Because I think, maybe notwithstanding the perfect time of the year and other issues, I think it's an important activity or event for the town. I think much is gained from having that here. So it's like a lot of things in life, it's, it's not perfect. But from my personal observation over the last few years, and I'm not involved with the Chamber directly, just my anecdotal observation and talking to both, it seems though it has been a bit on the decline. If this helps to improve that or stabilize it, then I don't think that's a bad thing. Certainly keeping in mind the imposition, the potential imposition on the residential, the residences that, on that. It's worked on homes, though, with the residents on Home Street over the last few years, good number of years. So I don't think it's maybe inappropriate.
Any other comments from any other commissioners?
I just.
On the, this is on the motion that's on the table now.
I understand, I just, I'm confident that the Chamber has heard what the citizens of Bay Street are concerned about and will approach this with that in mind, understand the responsibility you have to them as well as still the entire event.
Commissioner Turner? Mr. Bates? I have a motion on the fore and second, is a vote, Mr. Kayver?
Aye.
Mr. Elmer?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Bates?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
I have a question. Was that to accept the proposal or to approve it?
The proposal that was made tonight, to accept their, their recommendation to use Bay Street. As they presented tonight.
Right, I was just confused when you said we'll accept the proposal, I didn't realize.
Please. Motion to accept the proposal of the Mystic Chamber to utilize Bay Street for the art festival on August fourteen fifty, as set forth tonight by the Chamber.
With that warrant, can this law be?
Yes, yes, but this law is correct, that's the presentation we made, no more. Thank you. I've got a lot of traffic. Okay, traffic, uh, the town has recently received two new display signs that we found out were relevant or would save us about fifty-five hundred dollars?
Peace.
Peace, so that was something, you want to just comment on that, that I've helped with them?
Yeah, I contacted the individual that you gave me the information on, and the deal was, we, the chief had just had to sign off on an agreement that it would be put on, on the public roadways and that, that they would be able to extract data from it remotely, so they actually have a cell system there. The chief and I reviewed the agreement, it was totally reasonable, and the chief signed off on it. When they come and deliver them, which is in a week and a half, as soon as they deliver them to us, we own them. She says, we're giving them to you, you own them. So, so the only thing is, they asked if they can program them. So they said, if you put it on the street, call me up, I'll come down and I'll program it. Well, it is the identical system that we have around the town, so I, I can program it as well. And she said, as long as you know how to do it, I don't have a problem with you programming it. So it's gonna work out great, we already, we just lost one on the corner of Todd Wonk and Todd Wonk Spur, I tracked the trailer, crushed it. So we're short one anyways, and, and the chief has been getting, you know, his phone going up with people asking for these signs.
For your day right now.
Yeah. So, so they'll come in really handy and save you a bunch of money, so thank you.
Can you, when the, when we get those signs, can you make arrangements to get some publicity for that? Or maybe when you, when you, you accept them so that, you know, people see that they're out there and we know that? That'd be great, thank you very much, Captain. The Mystic Parking Study. Each of you, I sent a copy of the Mystic Parking Study to each of you, and I just want you to have an opportunity to review that. Most of the things in there, the town has to act on, but I want you to be able to read that and take a look at that just in case somebody asks you any questions about the study. But it's really up to the town right now to decide where they want to go on this. The, whether it's going to be paid parking on Cottrell Street and some other streets. There's, the town is certainly in the process of trying to evaluate other areas of shared parking. So it's good to move ahead, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight. It's something that's, at least it's a, it's a work in progress. So that's why it's on the, you have any questions about the study or Thomas, Chief, about the parking study?
Well, I think it's probably gonna be a work in progress. A lot of it has to do with more economic development and the two towns coming to agreements. But I guess it's the start of a conversation that hopefully can lead to sort of a comprehensive plan for down there. I mean, even tonight, we're talking about parking concerns, parking. I mean, even tonight, we're talking about parking concerns, parking, you know. I guess a lot of communities have a, wish they had this problem. And, uh, and now we're, 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 I guess, doing the best we can to manage how we, um, have the residents and the, uh, visitors that want to come here. And part of it, I guess, is a good problem to have in some cases, but it does create some challenges.
But I think the other thing is that our CSOs are now on, on board. They're out there, uh, they're helping with traffic and giving out parking tickets. And the captain should know because we've had some inquiries already.
Twenty in a day.
Twenty parking tickets the other day and those only got a couple of inquiries, right?
Four.
Four, that's not, not too bad. So, you know, it's working, so that's the thing on traffic. Any commissioners have any questions about the traffic study?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
Uh, wanted to ask Darren, uh, and again, this is just a process question, but, uh, were you incorporated or the police department in talking with the folks doing the parking study from the beginning? Or did they just do the study and, you know, here we are and we have to respond? Or how does that work?
Yeah, actually, the chair's been at all the meetings from, from the beginning as the commissioner of the legal traffic authority. Um, I was there a few of the beginning parts of it. And the local traffic authority in Groton is the police chief and the town manager. So I'm constantly talking with Chief DeZaro about a lot of those issues. For instance, in downtown Mystic, they don't have any CSOs yet. They're trying to get some over there. So we have them. Their parking tickets are twenty dollars, ours is twenty-five. So if you, you know, have a violation, you know, or what's going to go on, you, you sort of want to be on the same sheet of music. They, even the times, you know, we straightened that out a number of years, years ago. So we have the same time limits as we did in downtown Park at the Westwood to ensure that, you know, people don't know whether in Swartson or Mystic or Groton and to make that work. Uh, I think it's, again, execution. You know, a lot of people don't, okay, we have to execute some kind of plan here. And what that plan is going to be, still needs a lot of work. And, um, the biggest question is probably going to be paid a park. Where that would be, how it would work. And it would probably be a combination of not only this board, but, um, an offshoot of some kind of parking authority in downtown Mystic and a variety of different things that have to go on. So this is, I, I would even say we're ten percent done at this point in time. But a lot of it has to do with our town planners and figuring out what, what we can do.
Also, just for informational purposes, this, you know, chairman sent along the copy of that. I had trouble reading it on my phone. But if you, if folks ask you, if you go on the Groton, um, website, the, the, both the, the Zoom meeting that evening is there and also the hard copy of the, the whole, the whole study. So, you know, rather than saying, you know, following yours, if you just advise folks to go on the Groton apartment study, the, the, it's available.
There's a lot, there's a variety of issues down there. It's not just the parking area. A lot of it has to do with zoning, what Groton has done or failed to do, I guess, in some people's eyes with expansion of businesses and not requiring them to have parking spaces. And if you look at the development that's happening in Groton, they haven't had any parking spaces. But yet in Swartson, we, we made a conscious effort to try and make parking spaces on Cottrell Street to assist the businesses and create a better flow and to deal with those issues. Not a, it's not a criticism of Groton, it's a different, different setup over there. But it, it needs more of a group effort to figure out how this can really benefit the community as a whole. Because I think we're going to, uh, the, the words we continue to hear in downtown Mystic, it's the new Hampton. And I'll be honest with you, I did a quick survey the other day and went from Mason's Island Road to the Groton side to Allen Street. And I counted fifty-two luxury, I mean, over fifty thousand dollar luxury vehicles in that short period of time. So we have people in town that are spending money. A lot of out of stateers right now and had a nice busy day, uh, nice sunny day in downtown Mystic right now. Even on Monday or Tuesday, it's, it's rocking.
And I think Darren, you made an important point when you said that this is a type of problem a lot of places would like to have. And, you know, for most of us, I think we've actually had the chance to travel around Connecticut and see some really beautiful towns that are shuttered and falling to pieces because they don't have this problem. And nobody's going to visit. So, you know, thank you for your efforts.
It's a, it's a lot, this is going to be, this is going to go on for twenty years. This isn't something that's going to be, you know, in a year or two years down the road. It's going to have to continue to adapt. Um, you know, even how are we going to deal with electric vehicles? Because in fifteen years from now, twenty years from now, the majority of vehicles are electric. So we're, you know, and you're in downtown, but if you need to charge, where are you, where are you going to go?
You don't have to worry about it. They're going to self-drive over by the railroad tracks, plug themselves in and come back and get you later.
Or just hover over a spot and start charging.
It's going to get jerky.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Twenty years?
To Commissioner Bates' comment, I don't know what station it was on this morning, but there was a TV ad sponsored by the cities of Blue Mandate and within them, doing nothing but trying to attract the people there. I said, why should you come here? Why should you shop here? They're begging for me to come there. So again, amen to that.
I mean, it's a, it's a long time issue. Give you an example, the Broadway lot that we're trying to get up to speed. It's going to take a while because of drainage there and that would give us, I don't know, what do you think, thirty, forty slots there? But, you know, the great that's going to take a while to get that, that, they've organized that for well over a year or two. So, I mean, all these parking spaces, the sheer, the sheer parking with the churches and other places, it's going to take a while. But, you know, little by little, we're starting, we're going in the right direction, just that how long is it going to take?
And I actually give kudos to the police commission here over the years that they actually, um, took a proactive approach to try and do something. Because for twenty-plus years, you know, everybody has spoken about something needs to be done in, in this thing. Something needs to be done, like tonight, something needed to be done. So it was done in the police commission. Um, and they received a little flack, but they made Cottrell Street one way. And they did that because they felt it was in the best interest of the community. And expanded, expanded parking, expanded opportunities for the business and made it safer for everybody down there. And that's what it was all about, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item is approval of the minutes from Thursday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one hour meeting. Are there any comments on them?
I have one direction. I wasn't attendance at that meeting. I did arrive late, but, uh.
I got you now.
Sorry?
I fixed it.
Oh, you're done already?
Mark and Tardy. Mike, Mark and Tardy.
Did you mark me and Tardy today because I'm here?
I did not. You're here.
I was wondering if I'd be in the next minute or two minutes.
Well, Bill, Bill beat you by a little bit, but not much. Is there any other comments on the, uh, again, on the motion to accept the?
I'm going to make a motion at the minutes for the, um.
Second?
May thirteenth, signing of the police commission.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now reporter, the chief.
All righty. The budget report is in there, so we're in, in June right now, which means we're about ninety percent done with our fiscal year. I guess the big thing is you go to the second page and with seventy-nine point seven percent use of our, uh, our budget. Actually, it's a little bit more, they quit that quite a bit in the last few days. But basically, we're almost ten percent under budget and I believe there's going to be some more hits to it. But overall, um, the good news is that we're in the, in the black, not the red, uh, going into the home stretch here. We are over in a number of accounts. The big one's going to be overtime because we're down six officers. We're, we had to pay some overtime and then continued to do so until, uh, the end. Even with overtime right now, because we have the three officers in the police academy. Uh, we're waiting to see the numbers from now until they graduate because it's a commuter class. We're probably going to get anywhere from a minimum of three to a maximum of nine, even twelve hours, um, a week, um, or, or a day. Excuse me, a day, um, from them to, uh, for their travel time. So that's going to be one of our biggest hits there. The other one should be all set because we're, we're, uh, we're in the black for the final, uh, numbers that are, that they have. Monthly report, um, uh, typical for this time of year, the number of calls, the number of accidents, lock seasonings. We're going to start to up some of the anti-lit traffic stuff right now because we are vaccinated. I think we've been really waiting for some body cams and some other stuff, but we're going to, uh, the motor vehicle complaints and complaints about speeders are, um, like I said, I'm getting two a day right now. Wanting the signs and everything right there. Lawn report, nothing, uh, special there. The special events, we're starting to roll in. I have a post letter in there for Officer Brito and what he had to go through or is going through. We almost had that done. We contracted with Attorney, Attorney Elliot Spector, Inspector Law Enforcement Training. Um, known Elliot for many, many years, sit on a, uh, board with him. Uh, former police officer and a, an attorney for Karma, our insurance company. He does a specialized training to get certified officers from other states up and going. Hopefully that costs about three thousand, thirty-eight hundred dollars. But, uh, it's, uh, cheap money to get him off and going. I would suspect he's going to be out and done with that within the next, uh, I thought he was, I thought he was done this week. And, uh, he'll be out on FTO with another officer for probably anywhere from three to six weeks. And then he'll be on his own just in time for the height of the summer. Also in your packet is a wireless design invoice. Um, the chair and myself went to the board of finance the other night and did make a line item transfer um, out of one of our accounts to pay the wireless design group bill. I had one error. We had double dipped into that police technology fund, um, that is a catch-all for us, that saves the day. But we saved the day twice for that and there's only one day to save. So we went back to the board of finance and, uh, they moved that. Also his, um, bill came in, about fifteen thousand dollars over budget that we were a little bit surprised about. We did make some changes and some adjustments. We didn't think it was fifteen thousand dollars at the time until we got the bill. And, uh, we were going to continue to have discussions with, uh, Richard about, about this, uh, situation. Um, I was hoping he would be here tonight, but he is not. So I wonder if the update apparently isn't going to happen. Hiring update, Cap, if you want to talk about the standard?
So we have, um, three that started the academy. Um, they're doing very well. They're driving back and forth, which can be painful. Um, I suspect, uh, after talking to some of the people at the academy, they may make it, the state police are now staying there. Um, I would assume that Post is probably going to have them stay there in a month or so. Uh, that's what my guess is, hopefully, because we can save a boatload of money doing that. Um, so those three are, are moving along and doing well. Uh, I just had Trooper Lalo and Kyle Miller, um, here the other day. Gave them their conditional offer of employment. They both took their polygraphs this morning at nine o'clock in state lease. I'm waiting on the results, but normally no news is good news because, uh, if there's a problem with their poly, they normally call me and say, we've got a problem, we need to retest it or there's some other problem. So, uh, so that's going well. Um, and then, uh, we're just waiting to see if, uh, one of our other officers is going to retire in July as he says he is. And then we'll open another process. He'll be interviewing again.
Thanks, Cap. Cap, any questions for him about the hiring? CSOs are up and going and, uh, then we have another hiring question coming up here and that's from a, uh, hiring of an additional dispatcher at a meeting with the First Sluck Woman regarding, um, some of the federal funding that we're getting and the ability to use that. And certainly, uh, hiring of a dispatcher on a two-year basis is, uh, something that would be a great benefit to us. She came in and spent some time in dispatch to fully understand what it was like to be in there and, and her eyes were opened up pretty quickly and how can you operate with just one in there? So we've always had a goal of trying to have two people in there, two dispatchers during some of the busy times. Uh, unfortunately, that doesn't work sometimes and we have to go with one. Uh, third shift is usually one, but our goal is always to have two out there. So with this money, uh, if we're able to take some of that and hire somebody, uh, it certainly would make a difference. Also would because we have at least one, if not two retirements, uh, coming up in the dispatcher world here. So we would, in essence, have somebody onboard already trained and then if somebody left, we fill it in and then we have to backfill again. And it just makes sense to have somebody onboard. So I'm asking that the police commission approve. There's a sort of a job, uh, outline in here or basically justification by Lieutenant Schneider that we move forward with that. And, uh, I'll send it off to, um, Danielle and the Board of Sluck Women for their approval because I think they have the purview over all those money, all that money.
I think we, oh, yes, 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 you're talking about the, um.
Here then.
Yeah. We do.
And if, and if they say okay, and, uh, obviously, I think it's okay because Danielle already has come to us and said, why don't you submit something, then, uh, we, we would be.
Submit something to us to.
Right. Doing a hiring process pretty quickly to see if we can, uh, get a, get a dispatcher in and train. So it worked out pretty good for us.
Do you, how does the money come to us? Is it federal, state, municipal for funding of that position?
I think it's, I think, I think that's exactly how it came. It went to the state and then allocated to the different municipal authorities. But I believe we already have it. So we're just trying to think about how we can spend it.
And with that too is, uh, another opportunity would be, um, some of the radio stuff that's out there. That, uh, the interoperability, whether it be Rhode Island and a backup type system. Um, because we're not to, I know we're not recording here. Um, we have one minor flaw that we could, could fix, but it would be an expensive fix that we would, uh, that money would be perfect for. Um, and also, um, maybe an opportunity to say to Rhode Island and some of our partners over there to get some things going with that.
Darren, does that also represent an opportunity to bring the various fire departments up to where they should be? Because in previous discussions, we've talked about how their systems are, are basically outdated and there's a sort of backward stretch we have to do to stay operable with them. So if this federal money is available for that, is that something you thought about?
It would be a question whether they want it to or not. They are just, they are just involved in some preliminary discussions amongst themselves on whether they want to do, go to the radio system that we have and what goes on with that. Um, but certainly that would be, uh, hopefully money that could go that way as well, so. Yeah, yeah.
The, the bridge that has to be crossed at some point, there's no choice, right?
They have the choice.
Well, right now they do, but at some point in time.
They've always, always had that choice. Doesn't matter whether they want to do it or not.
Right, no, understood. But, um, yeah, well, let's grace each other on it because at some point that outdated equipment, they're going to stop servicing it, right?
Correct, yes.
And I don't know when that is, but if this is an opportunity, this isn't going to keep coming around, right?
It's not a, it's not a fine wine. It doesn't get better with age. So, so I think we're, I, I understand exactly where it is. It's a matter of whether, um, they want to do it. It looks like a, a group is interested in doing that, so it's, it is progress.
We need a motion on the?
Motion on the dispatcher.
Yeah, I, I read one. I'm asking for a motion that, that the chief be authorized to move ahead with, uh, hiring another full-time dispatcher for the police department. Some would. Is that, all in favor?
Uh, there's a couple of support letters in there. One for school violence prevention program and also a water loop, which basically is connecting Wesley Water to a loop system in the, in the area. Um, the other thing that we have is, uh, with the promotion of Matt Capalmo Sergeant, we left a slot in the detective. So a assigned detective, uh, now detective, George Stametin, Officer Stametin for that position. He will be, uh, he's already in a little bit of training right now and going at it. Also, if you look out in front, um, across the street, sort of a little bit of a gruesome scene over there. So that is, uh, with Matt in the high school and youth officer, Carrie Browning, and their push for proms in hand. Uh, they had a bunch of presentations at the high school, uh, this week when it came to driving, texting and, and, and safety and trying to get the point across. And obviously, we had the support and assistance of the Connecticut DOT for that, so their sign etc. out there. But that was, uh, youth officer Carrie Browning's, uh, project and she, she ran with it and certainly has made a little fire. What's that? Pocket of Fire, Student Pocket of Fire was over, assisted with a lot of that as well. So I think that's it, and I always feel like I'm forgetting something, but...
You are forgetting something, our triumphant announcement of our campaign, Darren.
Like I know, geez, so 211. So we had a big event in front of the town hall a couple of weeks ago, and Lisa was there, your head of 211, her name, Italian, was there, Danielle, we had some news media, and we talked about 911 versus 211, and how we can sort of bridge the gap and maybe stop some 911 calls for the future, because if somebody is in need of mental health evaluation or issues, that if they, early on, could maybe get some assistance and call 211, they could be pointed in the right direction and maybe not have to call 911. So we had that discussion, we have some nice flyers, and you're gonna see some billboards, and some things going out, the tax bills, there's a graphic iris that helped out, and it seems to be going in a very positive direction. I've sort of spread the news amongst the Connecticut chiefs and around, and gotten some pretty good feedback on it so far on, on trying to bridge that, that gap or disconnect for some reason, and what we talk about is, at the, at the schools, we, we teach all the kids in there and everywhere, 911, 911, we give out stickers, we put them on people's phones, or, you know, the old house phones, and now not many people know about those anymore, but you always had, call 911, it was in your house, didn't you? I don't have it, I don't know, I have the cell phone. So 911, 911, so a lot of people don't need to call 911, they need to call 211 to figure out how they can get some assistance with an issue that is really not a police issue to begin with. When we sort of encourage people, hey, if in doubt, call 911, but if you need to, you know, figure out a mental health issue, housing, heat issue, something that is bothering you that maybe you need to talk to somebody about, that, that, that's a better route than, because when you call 911, you get a police officer, whether you like it or not.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, do you need 211, you don't have 211?
No, no, I can, I can still remember three digits. I think I'm very supportive of the concept, we've talked about it, but will there be a periodic update from some entity that kind of says, okay, this is the number of calls that have come in that have, as opposed to people want to, the 911 have been directed or redirected over to 211 in a certain number of suicide-related or whatever the categories are, that we get some idea of the success of, of the effort, I guess?
Yeah, we're, we're actually very eager to collect exactly that type of data. Stonington has a very low rate of usage of 211. That type of awareness of 211 tends to, you know, in some communities it's higher and some it's lower, it's very low in Stonington right now, so there's a lot of opportunity. And so what we want, what we want to do is see how those calls go up and what type of calls we get from Stonington, which is very easy for us to track, and we're gonna meet with Darren and his team, actually the next week or so, to talk about the type of data that's already collected here, and then how we can put those together and develop a picture. But while we're on the subject, it's, I think, helpful just to also explain that 211 is essentially the dispatch for mobile mental health crisis services in Connecticut, for both youth, mobile health crisis through the Department of Children and Families, and for adult mobile health crisis through the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. And one number that I think is really interesting, this is pretty new, and we're basically on the cutting edge, not all 211s do this, but, you know, but we do, and we have now one full year of data, 2020, we took a hundred and twenty thousand mental health crisis calls in 2020, and of those, only point one five percent required escalation to 911. So I fly that to you because I have gotten a question from people that, well, it's nice if they call you, but don't you just have to call 911 anyway? And quite in fact, that's really not the case, and in those hundred and twenty thousand calls, ninety-one percent of the time, the callers reported that during just that phone call, their sense of crisis, their, their level of anxiety and stress was, was reduced. So that's pretty powerful. So in some percentage of those calls, again, they'd be trios to whether we can work out a plan over the phone, we'd be okay till tomorrow, here's what you can do tomorrow, or dispatching mobile mental health crisis, and the bar for that is lower with youth, right, there's two separate services. With youth, you're gonna dispatch the mobile mental health crisis services much faster than for adults, right, which I imagine makes sense to you. And then there will be those cases where if someone is in, you know, right now ready to harm themselves or someone else, we're gonna definitely turn it over to 911. So that's part of it, I think the question though, Commissioner Tabor, that you're also asking is, is there a possibility when people call 911 to potentially think about, could they refer to 211? That's a sort of separate issue that Darren and I have talked about, and we wanna be very, very thoughtful about what that might look like. It's much easier to escalate from 211 to 911 than to systematically, and in a way we can have real confidence, sort of de-escalate from 911 to 211. But if we can do that in a way that meets the requirements of, of our colleagues in the police, then we're glad to do it.
Well, it goes with the challenge if you're out of educating people.
Well, that's the awareness question, and so we're using some funding from the town, and, you know, thank you to the Selects for, it sounds like a band, the Selects, right, for the support, and we've also gotten the commitment from the Community Foundation, because it's, it's intensive, you have to have an intensive effort if you're gonna build awareness. So that's why we're gonna have the yard signs, we're gonna have mailings, we're gonna do quite a bit on social media, and we're gonna try and gauge, you know, how many people we reach to get work, so, yeah.
One, one last question, if I may. The preponderance, then it sounds like the preponderance of the 211 calls comes from maybe the, the major urban centers as opposed to...
Yeah, I would say that's true, but we get them from all over the state, but certainly the biggest numbers are from the areas of, you know, downtown...
I guess that kind of makes sense, but I mean, I guess somewhere along the line, if you, if you kind of, if somebody knows nothing about this really, other than what you described in, you know, who might look to understanding of it? If, if there, you know, if there was like a, a beta bank kind of a town, maybe, maybe somebody likes to... Where the, an effort to heighten the awareness in community, but you said Stoneton has low use, maybe we would be a good, a good community to try to highlight and increase the emphasis on Stoneton.
Yep.
And then your entity could say, hey, well, this is what we've done, accomplished here, so maybe this is what we could do for your...
Darren, why didn't you think that?
Was he at, at the meetings? That's exactly what we're trying to do?
Well, that's, that's why it's a pain in the neck of work.
Yeah, so...
We can understand that.
So, that's, you're, you're exactly right, that's exactly the idea. The concept is to start in a place that is a manageable size.
See, nobody gave me any notes here, because nobody talks to me, so I mean, it's just, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I mean, it, it seemed like a kind of ideal opportunity to start in a place like Stonington, which is small enough, with a, you know, progressive chief of police who understands the importance of this, and then get the money together to do a very intensive campaign, right, because it would cost us probably ten times much to do this in Hartford, New Haven. So we're gonna start small and see what success, and it just happens, we did not know until we ran the numbers, that Stonington is a particularly low user of 211, and so it'll be easy to see if there's a, if there's any type of increase or not, we're gonna know pretty clearly through to this.
They also have to be ready for it too, because if you rolled it down statewide, and all of a sudden they had a twenty-five percent increase in the number of 211 calls, they may not be ready for that.
Right.
You have to, so, so we're trying to see, they know the number of calls that went into 211?
Yep.
So after our campaign and our ability to, to go out and talk to people and actually human services and with some help from us, hiring a community outreach specialist, Diana Rushlow, is wonderful, she starts on Monday, off and running, and how that can assist, because we're still going on these mental health calls.
Right.
And, and, and we're like the last resort here in most of the cases, that they're calling 911 because something bad's going on. We're hoping, and there never be any data on this whatsoever, because if they get to them earlier, other than the number of calls, get to them early, get help, and then we don't get the 911 call, we're not gonna, we're never gonna be able to get that, but that's our ultimate goal, is that somebody gets a help for 211 before they have to escalate to 911 for a fam, for an issue in the family, mental health, eating, whatever happens to be in the world that needs their assistance, and helping people out. So I think it's certainly riff wild, and we're gonna be plugged into that, we still have some things to work out, how things are gonna work, and the big one is, how do you, a 911 call, how do you send it to 211, if somebody just called and asked, you know, for police assistance, right, emergency, and how, how we, how we can throw those calls together.
And maybe, Darren, at the end of the game, it's not just one or the other, but a synergy between the two, for the better of the back client that we're dealing with at the time, so that it's, it's de-escalated from a 911 position for police officers and the 211 people work together, and it's not like, oh, call 211, no, you're a 911, but maybe a little more synergy side to, to help the property law, you know?
We're afraid, we don't want it to be a dumping ground, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, that's what I think, yeah.
Okay, 911, we're, yeah, you would've been better off calling 211, I mean, doomed, and then, and then they don't have the whole story, because a ton of our 911 calls, you don't have the whole story and what's going on there, so we, we have work to do in that area, but I think the, the big part of it, and I know it's a one-way street, it's very easy for 211 to send it to 911 because it's clear on 211's mind, they need the police there. Where it may not be as clear to us that it needs to go the other way, and we know that, and we just have to work, work that one out, and I give Lisa and her team a lot of credit because they are trying to figure, you know, work with that, and the numbers are very low, like Lisa says, of having to go to the police, or in those special cases, Lisa just calls me up and I connect her with that police department.
Yeah, that's something. Or, great.
I just wanted to add one, one other thing, I think Danielle said last night at her board, it's second to me, that it's educating the, the residents that we have this, I think there's gonna be a flyer in your tax bills, I think, right, and I think the superintendents agreed to put a flyer in their kids' backpacks that they bring home at the Friday, and, and one other place, other Stonington, like the, the quarterly Stonington, look like that the Department of Community Services publishes, so we're gonna start publishing it, you know, just, I think the more people know that it's available, the more, the more you should, you know, the power of work, so...
We're gonna roll it out too, because we have our special community policing officer that continues to go out and work with residents that are having some difficulties along with our mental health, mobile outreach, and then now with Diana coming onboard, we're certainly gonna introduce 211 to them and say, hey, some, some of the issues that you're having, you may be able to, if you're not getting assistance, this is where you can go, and be a conduit for that, instead of, yeah, you just get a police officer, and, all right, what's going on, you know, call, call here when you have a chance, nice talk with you. We, we, you know, we wanna make sure that people are on the right track and go for them.
Do you know what the Commission on Education sends out Gray Matters?
Uh, Gray Matters, yeah, no, Gray Matters has not gone out.
Okay.
I think there was talk at the last meeting, at meeting next year, we would start to do that again, but they put all of the notifications inside the publication that the, that the Department of Community Services publishes.
Okay.
Yeah, so there isn't a separate issue for Gray Matters, not at the moment.
Just another here.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions for the, on the report of the chief? And a motion to accept the report of the chief?
Some will, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is included in the package, if you want them to accept the consent agenda, so move. Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
I only have one other thing at the end here.
Okay.
Is, I know, June, you have spoken about it, and I apologize if I don't have, have it on here, but the thank yous and the atta boys and girls that, that come in, I think off the top of my head, I had three this week come in, that were just very small, minor things, but just phone calls that were left, or a quick email thanking police officers who are going to their homes or assisting them with an issue that they're having in the neighborhood, or something along that line. One involved a, an untimely death of a family member, and that the police officers, they did a nice job, and, and the person dropped off cookies and everything to the police department as a, as a thank you for what they had done and assisted with what's going on. So they continue to roll in, and I think we should have a further conversation on how we memorialize these at the commission level and then further, further out, because they do, do come in, sometimes you get them, sometimes the lieutenant gets them, sometimes the sergeant gets them, sometimes it goes to the first select woman or the town hall, but, you know, and then at the end of the day, I don't wanna lose track of the good work that officers are doing day in and day out, because it can easily fall in between the, the traffic and the accidents and the, the bad things we're dealing with, but it's, it's always a reminder that they're doing good work out there.
Just to remind you, Commission, is the town is gonna put these letters on the town website, write you in, and that's the board?
But that was, yeah, the one meeting with Commissioner Mason, you had, you noticed, like you, you made notice of all the thank yous and then, and the good thing that people are writing out, gave me an idea of, we should have it in one spot, because we love our peace here, and, you know, and they do a lot of really good things, so I thought there would be something, so we're, if we're on board for doing it, we just haven't quite figured out how to do it.
Yeah, that's good. Anything else from the Commission?
I have a motion to, all right?
Can I just jump in one last thing? We have the final report for the, jumping back to the Mystic Parking Study. I'll assume that we will get updates as far as any action items that take place with this. I always get concerned with final report that this goes in.
Well, first and foremost, is the legal traffic authority for the town of Stonington is this board.
You can't do anything without it.
So, June, the board of selectmen cannot make a decision on traffic and parking, they can make a recommendation, but this board is the policy and the, the buck stops with you when it comes to that.
Thank you.
I have one other thing, traditionally, the Board of Police Commissioners has assisted at the high school for the pancake breakfast, which is on the seventeenth. So if anybody would like to assist at the high school for the seniors, we usually, I can't make it this year, but we usually help with pancakes and the sausage and get some off of the, at the high school, so if anybody would like to do that, they could get a hold of it, seventeenth.
That's a Thursday.
Early, early.
It's early, early in the morning.
It's like seven?
Six-thirty. Six-thirty, we start mixing the batter at six-thirty and...
So anybody would like to...
I would like to volunteer to assist the chef, because you may be watching me do it.
Yeah, it's, it's inside this year, sometimes they do it out back, this year it's in the kitchen.
Oh, it's in the kitchen?
Yep.
We did it one year in the kitchen, I think.
It's part of the Pocket Lions Club, Lions Club has done that for, oh boy, twenty-plus years that we've been doing, been doing it as, as Lions, and so we go in, the police department usually has a representation there, I usually do it.
So six-thirty to when, if I may?
By, usually by nine o'clock you're done, and by nine-thirty you're in the shower because you smell like sausage.
You, is this for the graduation party?
It's all the graduating seniors that's there.
They used to do it at the Hoxsey Friday Department, didn't they?
No, they didn't, they always did it out back at the, at the, at the recreation.
All right, so if anybody would like to do that, get a hold of the chief, I can't make it.
All right, be there, chief.
Get ready.
Get some pictures.
I shared that the year my daughter graduated.
All right.
Oh, we did it someplace else.
Maybe have two of them.
All right. Do you have a motion that, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.